Welcome to the December 4th Murphysboro City Council Meeting. It's good to see everyone. Ms. Madeline Skels Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow? Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you just to say thank you, Lord. Thank you for our blessings, seen and unseen. And we thank you for the citizens of this great community, our employees who keep us safe, all administration staff that makes our city the way we are today. And, Lord, we thank you for the holiday season. And especially pray for those that had a tough time through the season, Lord. Because devoid in our life of our loved one gone, but, Lord, we know that we were not ready, but they were ready, and they are out of all their pain and suffering. And just thank you for the memories. And, Lord, as we begin to celebrate our Christmas season, we ask that you bring peace to those that have lost loved ones, Lord. And, Lord, I'd like to thank you for, all over the world, there seems to be so much unrest and violence. And I thank you that Murphysboro, Lord, is peaceful. We thank you for that, Lord. We thank you as we run our errands and go to work and do various things through the day that we're safe. And, Lord, I thank you that with all the mixed up moods and attitudes and everything, we can still come together, Lord, as a city, and sit down and discuss and be peaceful. We thank you for that. Lord, we thank you for the retirees, the service that they have provided to put the city where we are. And as we replace the retirees, we ask that we choose the ones that will take us to the next level. And, Lord, I want to thank you for our new council member who has now made our council complete. And, Lord, we ask as we get ready to handle the business of this city that you move in the midst of us, that we make decisions that you will be pleased with. This is my prayer, Lord, that I ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll start with a few ceremonial items. I do have some guests in the audience tonight that we want to recommend. We have Leadership Rutherford, who's here. And then we also have some individuals with youth leadership, Rutherford. We have Abby Tracy, Devin Dunkley, Savannah Lee, Anthony Akers, and Catherine Byrd, if you wouldn't mind standing up. We appreciate you going through Leadership Rutherford and joining us tonight. We're gonna have a really long meeting, and part of the deal is that you can't leave. So, see you about midnight. I'm gonna turn over item eight to City Manager Lyons.
Yes, we'd like to welcome Althea Pencil. She, come forward. Althea has joined the city, is our first purchasing director. We are looking forward to exciting things from Althea and her background and experience. She served as a purchasing director in communities in Florida. She and I both share service with the city of Murphysboro, I mean, the city of Murphysboro, but also the city of West Palm Beach. I got ahead of myself. So, Althea's on board. She's gonna be going around to the various departments, learning how they procure things. And then we're really at the bottom floor and starting the new automated system with the software authorized by the city council. So, her timing of getting here is perfect. So, she'll be able to help be an architect of that, and she may wanna share a few things with us.
Well, thank you so much for having me here in Murphysboro. And it is already, as I can see, a great city from the people I've met and the people I'm going to be working with. I look forward to that. My contracting experience began overseas in the Department of Defense, and you know how complicated that can be, all right? And also, I worked for German firms translating back and forth. And cities have always been my great love. I always say that I should've been a planner, but I'm a very good purchasing director. So, thank you so much for having me. And Rob did a good job of selling Murphysboro to you.
Thank you for joining our team. We're glad that you're part of, part of a special place.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Turn the podium over to Ms. Logan. She has a presentation of a Stars Award.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. And tonight, we're here again to celebrate one of our wonderful employees here for the city of Murphysboro. We're so blessed, as Ms. Skels Harris said during her prayer tonight, that we have just such a wonderful community that we live in, and that we have such wonderful employees that serve this community. Back this summer, one of our Water and Sewer Department meter readers, Mr. Adam Todd, was out doing his job and noticed an abandoned walker on a lot over on Ravenwood Drive and thought that it looked odd. And so, he investigated and found an elderly man who had dementia, had fallen and was non-responsive in the front yard. And because of his investigative work, he stayed with the man until our first responders were able to stay there. He revived the man. And it is, you know, something that we would attribute that he did a lot to helping that gentleman. A lot of people would've just seen a walker and just kept on going, but Adam took the time to go by there and make sure that, he thought it was something wasn't right, and he investigated it, and he found something was not right. And it just shows the dedication and just the goodness of the people that serve here at the city of Murphysboro. So, before we present his Stars Award tonight, that the Stars Committee was so glad to honor Adam with, I'd like to ask Mr. Darren Gore, Mr. Randy McCollough, Mr. Terry Taylor, all from the Water and Sewer Department who work with Adam, to please come to the podium and share any words about Adam that they would like before we present Adam and his family here with the award tonight.
Thank you, Shannon. I'll, I don't know if these guys have anything prepared or not, but I will, put them on the spot, maybe. I will say that the meter readers are as frontline employees as you've got. And their job is very, very difficult. They work, they walk miles and miles in the heat, in the cold. It doesn't matter, it's rain or shine, they're having to go pick up those readings on those water meters so that we can develop the bills and send those out and bill our customers. But Adam is the type employee, I don't wanna make him get blush here, but he's the type that it doesn't matter what you ask him to do, he's gonna do it. He's as friendly and as nice and as good-natured as you can come, as you can have as an employee. And he's genuine. I think that's attributed to Randy and Terry as well. Adam can, Adam really does go above and beyond in everything he does. So, we hope with our new automated meter reading, advanced metering infrastructure that's coming up, that we're gonna have some advancements, advancement opportunities for Adam and help, help the department even more. So, we appreciate him very much.
I'd just like to congratulate Adam and tell him how proud of him we are.
Thanks.
Adam's been with me for about five years, and he's excelled in everything I've asked him to do. I can't ask for a better person. He never denies me of anything. I mean, he does it all. I wanna congratulate him. He's, he's done exactly as I expected him to do. So, thank you.
Adam, would you please come to the podium?
Thank you.
We are not only, we say that we're proud of you, but you make us proud. And you are the reason that the city of Murphysboro excels in what we do, and we are, we are proud of you and appreciate what you do.
I appreciate it.
And I think you probably have some family members you wanna have come up and introduce as well, don't you?
This is my wife, Melody, and my son, Weston. He's ten months. He's what drives me, sometimes up the wall. I appreciate it, and I thank y'all and I humbly accept this, and I'd like to appreciate that. And say thanks to the firemen that came quickly to save me, 'cause I was a nervous wreck. But, you know, if it wasn't for them, you know, that gentleman might not be here today. So, thank y'all so much, and I appreciate it.
That kid's tall.
I think we've got one more. Councilmembers, many of y'all were at a ceremony that we had today at three o'clock. And, you know, I think it's fitting tonight that we're gonna be talking about a new project in the Gateway. And at the same time, we're also honored today, a gentleman who has literally devoted his life to the city of Murphysboro. And it's, it's with great honor that we get to celebrate. Mr. Joseph Adalot is officially retiring tomorrow, and I have a proclamation that we wanna read, just so the residents can understand a little better who Joseph is and some of the things that he's done with this city. And after that, Mr. Lyons, I'm sure he'll turn the mic over to you before we let Mr. Adalot come up and speak. Mr. Adalot, come on up. Whereas Joseph Adalot was born and raised in southern Hickman County, Tennessee, along Swan Creek in the Sunrise community, and attended Hickman County High School graduating in 1978. And whereas he attended Middle Tennessee State University and graduated in 1982 with a bachelor's degree in urban planning. And whereas Mr. Adalot began his employment with the city of Murphysboro in 1984 as a planner, becoming Planning Director for the city in 1991. And whereas he served the city loyally and faithfully for thirty years, overseeing Murphysboro's planning and growth, contributing significantly to its economic development and attractive qualities. And whereas the city of Murphysboro could not have achieved nationally recognized success without his longstanding commitment, sacrifice, and planning expertise. This is something I think that is, is fitting to listen to this. The city's population grew from just under fifty thousand to an estimated 118,676 in 2014. During Mr. Adalot's tenure, the city's growth and expansion called for a number of land use plans to include Salem, Blackman, and Manny Avenue, which he oversaw. And one of the more notable achievements during his services as Planning Director has been the construction of Medical Center Parkway and the Gateway Project anchored by St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital, Murphysboro Medical Clinic, the Embassy Suites Hotel and Conference Center, and the Avenue, a growing retail and restaurant space enjoyed by Murphysboro residents and visitors nationwide. Whereas communities need visionaries such as Mr. Adalot that create better places for people to live, realizing that a great vision precedes great achievement. And whereas Mr. Adalot's professional experience includes service in American Planning Association and the International Right-Away Association. And whereas he served on the Main Street Revitalization Program Board of Directors from 1993 to 2014, during which time he held positions on the Executive Committee as Treasurer and as Secretary of the Board. Whereas we join in celebrating his dedicated service in retirement effective December 5th, 2014. Now, therefore, I shame McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murphysboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council, and in recognition of his distinguished service to the community, to the city of Murphysboro and Rutherford County, do hereby declare December 4th, 2014, as a day to honor Joseph Adalot, and urge all the community to join as we extend our congratulations and wish him well in his future endeavors. Congratulations, Mr. Adalot.
Thank you. I couldn't begin to, to tell you how many nights I spent with you folks. I think that probably if Georgia did some research, we would find that I probably have attended more council meetings than any other person in here, except for Georgia. I think she's probably got me beat. And Georgia and I go back a long ways, because I remember she welcomed me to my very first council meeting. Sometimes you folks have asked me, why do you come to all the council meetings? Well, this is where it happens. This is where the leadership of the community steers the course for the community. And as a planner, I find that very important to my job, to be here on the front line, not just watch it on TV. I've learned a lot from you folks. I've presented a lot to you. I've shared with you my thoughts and visions of the community. And as I said to the Planning Commission last night, sometimes you've embraced it, sometimes you haven't. But we've all learned together, and we've moved this community forwards. Right here is where it happens. This is where the government of our community happens. And as I often say, this is part of what planners do, and I'm glad to have been part of our community. Thank you for recognizing me. It means an awful lot to me. I spent my time working for the community, and I don't know what, I don't know of a different job that would've fit me better. I hope that retirement fits me as well as the, my employment as a planner, because that has fit me well. Thank you for allowing me to do it. Thank you.
Councilmembers, I have Mr. Young. You've served with Mr. Adalot a long time.
And, you know, we had a little cry session last night at the Thinking Commission meeting, so I'll just start, start the new one here. There's two things that I look and see that we're, we're gonna miss with Mr. Adalot. One is his vision. He had a vision that sometimes it's hard to see. Sometimes we can't see the forest of the trees. But Joseph could always separate that, and he could see the big picture and the long-range picture. He taught me to ask, five years from now, what's this gonna be? Ten years now, what's this gonna be? Fifteen and twenty. And that's the question we have to ask. If you look at his planning staff, he hired Ms. Logan, he hired Mr. Bromley, he hired Ms. Green. Where's Mr. Lewis? He hired Mr. Lewis. All those people are gonna carry on the legacy of Mr. Adalot. And another thing that I think we're sorely gonna miss with Mr. Adalot is his historic perspective. He can tell you what happened in 1994. I can't tell you what day it is half the time. But he can tell you what happened in ninety-four, and eighty-nine, and 2001, and how we handled that problem then. We're sorely gonna miss your historical perspective. And I have served longest, as the senior planning member on the Planning Commission, I am proud to have, to serve with you, and I look forward to your retirement, and I'm glad to call you a friend.
During Joseph's retirement ceremony today at three o'clock, some of the things I shared were what Joseph's loves were. Joseph obviously loves his family. Joseph loves Hickman County. Joseph loves fishing. He loves making things out of wood. But most especially, Joseph Adalot loves Murphysboro. And time and time again, over many, many years, I saw Joseph's love for this community. As people would come to the community looking to develop, they had a dream and a vision, and Joseph always worked hard to help them accomplish that. It's a difficult job to be a Planning Director in a very rapidly growing community, but Joseph always one of the best for Murphysboro. And to that, we are very thankful for his service and his, his vision. He is a visionary, and saw things sometimes when others didn't. And he helped make us better, and the impact of Joseph's work on our city will last generations.
Mr. Adalot, we're proud for you. We're proud of you. And more importantly, I think the citizens of Murphysboro, whether we agree or disagree, can go through and they can see areas that we, we inevitably are proud of our community. And you have been a big part of that, and I suspect you'll continue to be a big part of that, whether you're on a stream or working in your woodshop. And we appreciate what you've done for this community. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Caught me off guard, Mayor.
Mr. Lyons, I think you have a video that we also wanna, or talk about, a comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir. Murphysboro 2035 is gonna be meeting again next week. The task force will meet Monday at 6:00 PM at the Chamber. There'll be a community presentation of Chapter One on Tuesday, 5:30 at Oakland Middle School. And in order to promote that, our city TV staff, especially Mike Devils, prepared a video. We hope you enjoy, and we're gonna roll that for you now.
I like Murphysboro. Our city is really nice. It has a lot of fun places to go to, places to eat, places to shop. I like the toy store, places to have fun, and places to walk around just to look. And there are a lot of people that live here. My dad says, when I'm his age, there will be even more, more places to eat and buy things, and a lot more people, too. He says that there are people working on something now to help Murphysboro with that growth. He called it a comprehensive plan. I like the other name, Murphysboro 2035. He also said they need everyone's help to make it happen. So, what are we waiting for? Let's work on our future together. Visit this website to find out more about the plan. Murphysboro 2035, our future begins now.
Join us for our next community presentation event on Tuesday, December 9th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at Oakland Middle School.
Now, if we ran credits for that, you'd realize that Michael's son was the voice that kept it in the family.
So, we don't have to pay him to do it.
You know, there for a minute, it sounded like Linus on, on Charter Brown. Last but not least, wanna formally welcome our newest council member, Councilman Bill Shacklet. We're, we're glad we've got the seventh chair filled, so we're, we're glad you're here.
I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
We'll move to the consent agenda. You have several items before you.
Move for approval. Excuse me, approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
I wasn't gonna say anything, Joseph, but, you know, you're special to me. I've been sitting here thinking, you know, you're really special to me. You know the battles we fought and, and what we've done, and Manny Avenue and, and different projects, me working for the liquor company and, you know, and those kind of things, and intermingling. You know, the city, you know, you're gonna, you're losing a very special person. You really are. Yeah, if we're gonna replace him with somebody, I don't know who that's gonna be, but if they can live up to Mr. Adalot's standards, then bring it on. Because, you know, I know what it takes to be a planner and do what he's done during a tremendous growth period, and all the standards, and all the changes, and all the, you know, development changes, and all that kind of stuff that was going on behind the scenes. And me being on the Planning Commission from 1993 to 2002, he's special. So, Joseph, I wanna tell you, you know, publicly, and I've told you privately, how special you have been to me. And I wanna tell you publicly, you know, good luck to you. I envy you. I wish I retired with you. I hate right now, but I wish I could. So, take care of yourself, young man.
Thank you, Councilman Washington.
Did we pass the concerns?
We did.
Okay.
And we'll move into the minutes. You have the November?
Do we vote?
Pardon?
Never mind.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have the November 6th, 2014 special meeting and the November 6th, 2014 regular meeting. If you have any additions or deletions?
Mayor, with no additions or deletions, I'll move for approval.
Second. Councilman Young, Councilman LaLance. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into second readings. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 140A51, to annex an area located along Blackman Road and adopt for same, a plan of services.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into second readings. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 140A51, to annex an area located along Blackman Road and adopt for same, a plan of services.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 140Z53, amending the conditions applicable to the planned commercial development, PC District, and planned residential development, PRD District, located along Middle Tennessee Boulevard and East Main Street.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. A motion and a second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading, ordinance 14055, amending Murphysboro City Code, Section 2-10, Procurement Code, regarding procurements utilizing Federal Transit Administration funding.
Move for passage. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into first readings, and consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 14049, amending Appendix C Employees' Revised Pension Plan of the Murphysboro City Code to comply with requirements regarding the treatment of same-sex marriage by qualified retirement plans. Ms. McGannon, we'll pass this to you.
Mayor, Council, I bring to you tonight the recommendation of the Pension Committee, which was to accept the recommendation of the city's actuary, Brian Pendleton Swatz-McAllister, to, as to how to come into compliance with the Internal Revenue Service's ruling and notice about the implications of the U.S. Supreme Court's decision in the Windsor case that treating same-sex couples differently under federal tax law violated the equal protection clause of the U.S. Constitution. The IRS has said that if your plan has a provision in it that would treat such couples differently, that you need to amend the plan to make clear that they will be treated in accordance with the Supreme Court decision in Windsor. If you do not, if you, if your plan is neutral and doesn't say anything, no amendment is required. The Internal Revenue Service, by the notice, a copy of which I put on the council tables tonight, speaks to that in question and answer five, has also said that if you require amendment, you should do so promptly. Our pension plan says that its terms are to be interpreted in accordance with state law. Tennessee state law does treat such persons differently. Believe that is the provision that requires us to amend the plan in order to stay as a qualified pension plan under the rules of the Internal Revenue Service. As you know, we closed the pension plan in 2010 to new hires, but it exists for many retirees and existing employees who were hired before 2010, and millions of dollars are invested in order to generate income to pay the pension benefits that the council has promised these individuals. to keep the plan as a qualified plan in accordance with the IRS rules. The IRS has said that this, the plan has to treat folks in accordance with Supreme Court rule. So I want to make very clear that this is only the pension plan and only because the federal government has said that this is required. It is not impacting any other city benefit provision. It is not an endorsement or expression of opinion about this. It is maintaining the qualified status for the plan and doing it in the language that our actuaries, attorney, who are experts, who we defer to on those complicated tax matters, have said is appropriate. And it was for that reason that the Pension Committee concluded that we needed to maintain the qualified status of the plan and that this was the way in which to do it. And so that is why this language is being brought to you at this time, is to maintain the tax-qualified status of the plan in conformity with federal law, and that is all that it does. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. McGannon?
Hearing no questions, I move for passage on the ordinance which Ms. McGannon so eloquently stated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move into new business. In continuing with our monthly updates from different department heads, we'll hear from the fire chief regarding the update on Murphysboro Fire and Rescue Department's accomplishments and the things that are going on with our Murphysboro Fire and Rescue Department. Chief Gaines, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I thank you for this opportunity to update you on the status of some of our budget goals and department initiatives. And the hot topic of the day a couple of months back was BLS service. So I want to give you a little information as far as the status is now. On July 28th, we launched the department's BLS services. And as of today's date, all EMTIVs within the department, with the exception of one who was on an extended leave, have been credentialed through the Rutherford County's credentialing process. And we currently have two employees going through paramedic school. More than half of our personnel holding an ENT licensure have completed the training and skills and service to be able to transition to AEMT, which is Advanced EMT, which is required by the State of Tennessee by 2016. So we're trying to be proactive and go ahead and get that in place so that it won't be an issue two years from now. Four hours of mandatory CPR training was completed for all personnel during September and October. Pediatric training will be presented by Monroe Carroll Insurance Hospital at Vanderbilt, and that is slated for February at Patterson Park Community Center. And that's a four-hour course that it's not going to be any cost associated with it. Monroe Carroll is voluntarily doing this, so we're going to take advantage of that offer. Division is continuing to work with ITS on upgrading fire and medical reporting. And we have sent several representatives to multi-agency meetings regarding Ebola and the terror virus. And we sent out and issued current and pertinent information to the employees to ensure that they know that we were thinking of their safety as well as the community. And we purchased several items of equipment associated with the threat of Ebola and the terror virus. And equipment includes, but it's not limited, to goggles, gowns, Tyvek coveralls, shoe covers, canisters, respirators, et cetera. We do have some additional training associated with this equipment. That training is ongoing, such as donning and donning that equipment. And according to the CDS, the most risk is posed when you put an equipment on and taking it off. It's not so much as patient treatment, but it's what you do after patient contact. And total incidents from July 28th to November 30th, 2014, we had 3,677 calls for service. Of that number, 2,299 were medical-related. We had 232 accidents with injuries. We performed 10 extracations, and we responded to four motor vehicle versus pedestrian incidents. And communications update. The communication towers in Marshall and Blackman Station, four hour bid, the response date, which was originally scheduled for December 2nd, has been extended to December 30th. And FAA has approved a 120-foot tower at 1,004 North Highland. And due to the delay in the training center, we have reapplied for the FAA for the tower at Coleman. And IT is working with Chris Griffin, David Ives, to complete the necessary paperwork to move forward with the CUV site on Halls Hill Pike. And expected timeline is December 30th bid opening, January 15th if council meets and if council approves. Then January 27th, that would be a pre-construction meeting. And the 17th of February, hopefully, construction will start. And without any unforeseen delays, September 18th, we would anticipate completion. And every fire station now has a new computer for firefighter use. We purchased and did receive and in the process of installing the Rocket modem as well as the NOX boxes. And if council remembers back during budget presentation, I did stress that as an issue because we did not have the connectivity for our computer system. But now that we have that purchase and once installation is complete and IT does the configuration to enable that connectivity, we're going to launch our wireless reporting system and our personnel will be able to conduct inspections out in the field and enter those inspection while out in the field. Inspections, incident reports, fire investigations, the plea planning, the whole garment, it runs the whole garment as far as what we can do with that system. And I appreciate council approval as well as purchase. The fire investigation trailer, which is a 30-by-9-foot fire investigation trailer, was delivered to us on November 21st, and the equipment will soon be installed on the unit in equipment that will include gas detection monitors, a computer printer, metal detector, camera, as well as audio and visual equipment. Fire apparatus update. Ladders 1 and 8, which is our new 75-foot arrows, were delivered in November. Ladder 8 is currently at Station 10, where equipment is being loaded and installed, and ladder 1 is at headquarters for equipment installation. And ladder 8 is almost completely loaded with equipment and hose. Ladder 1 is in the process of being loaded. And Engine 3, which was the new pumper that was purchased, is currently at Neely Cobal in Nashville. When it arrived, it had some cosmetic issues. We did not take acceptance as it was delivered, and so it's in the process of getting those cosmetic issues repaired. And once administrative staff, as well as fleet, gives it the okay, then the proper paperwork will be signed, and then we will start installation of equipment at that time and go ahead and hopefully expedite getting it in service. And training on all three apparatus will be provided by the factory tech December 17th, 18th, and 19th to cover all three shifts as well as fleet service. And all three of the apparatus that we purchased have the state-of-the-art 2,000 GPM pump. We currently have some job vacancies which we're in the process of filling. We did receive 115 applications through NeoGov system. And with the change of the job description to reflect the current services, that kind of, it lowered the actual number of applicants that applied, but it goes direct to the services as we're performing them now. So it kind of eliminates some people on the front end that were not with the qualifications as the job description reads today. One grant item, which is on the consent agenda, which was FEMA's Assistance Firefighters Grant, which we asked for approval to apply for the ProTracker, which is a distress alarm system designed to help locate, down trap the lost firefighters. And hopefully, if we awarded that grant, it's a 90% funded grant, and total purchase price should be $2,700 with a 10% match, which we would absorb in the budget. And on Monday, December 1st, a meeting was held with the State Fire Marshal's Office concerning the Fire Mentality Initiative for the State of Tennessee. And during the meeting, we were informed that Murphysboro Fire and Rescue has the lowest percentage of unknown fires in the state. And we're also informed that we are among the top in fire origin and cause determination. And at this time, I would like to commend the Fire Marshal's Office for their commitment and dedication. And we're still working with council director as far as engaging the community. We have done this calendar year 12 special events, as far as the special events team, with a total number of 11,675 contacts. I would help entertain any questions that you may have.
Captain, if you have any questions?
Oh, I didn't have a question. I was just going to commend you. I was sitting here, and I'm just amazed that your figures that you were throwing out sounded like, and your proactiveness in your department where all those people are certified and attuned, you're working on those, that's tremendous. And your accolades you talked about. And I was not aware that your medical, you went on so many medical calls. But you all do a fantastic job. I'm a witness to that a couple of times. My mom got sick, and you all were right there and working on it just like she was in the emergency room. Fabulous job. And your department is part of the entity that makes up our great city, and I just want to commend you and all the employees on an excellent job in keeping us safe. That means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Men and Women of our department.
Okay, thank you, Chief Gaines. All right, we'll move into item 10, Consider Recommendations of the Gateway Commission to Approve a Contract with Project Lynch. Ms. Lyons.
Mayor, members of city council, I am very excited to present this next agenda item on behalf of your economic development team. We've got a recommendation for a corporate headquarters in the gateway. And this city council has had a vision for many, many years to create opportunity, economic investment, and grow jobs in our city. The gateway project as we know it now is generating significant property taxes. I think the last number we looked was over 8% of the city's property tax bases is located in the gateway now. We're seeing significant growth in our sales taxes, now our number-one source of revenue. We're seeing tourism, additional hotels be constructed. The conference center's been an anchor in our community and a place for many community events. So the vision of this city council to establish the gateway has been a real winner for our community. And one of the longstanding goals for us has been to attract a corporate headquarter project. That's for many years we've worked, and we've recognized that all the ingredients were there tonight. We're very pleased to recommend to you a project that would realize a corporate headquarter here in Murphysboro. Project Lynch would be a 64,000-square-foot building, would employ 250 people within five years of receiving their certificate of occupancy with an average salary of $60,000. So there's excellent paying jobs in exchange or as an inducement for locating their corporate headquarters. We've worked with them and are recommending that the city donate 10 acres on Garrison Drive to attract that corporate headquarter project. Project Lynch would look to begin construction next summer and hope to be completed in the fall of 2016. Project Lynch also believes that they're going to continue to grow. So the proposed contract on your packet includes an option for two additional acres at no cost. They would build a building of not less than 20,000 square feet with an additional 100 employees. So this really does get to be an exciting opportunity for us. The contract, you know, as all contracts do, you have to consider the what-ifs. So we have addressed issues regarding what happens if they never build the project, what happens if they move or sell. So we have addressed those circumstances and the unlikely event that they would happen. One of the other parts of this project is there is no property tax abatement. They're going to pay property taxes from day one. There's been some discussions with the company that there may be a personal property tax abatement through the Industrial Development Board. We believe that would be in the magnitude of $20,000 or less, but that's still going through the process with the Chamber and the Industrial Development Board. The Gateway Commission met on this on Monday and unanimously recommended approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Rob, this is obviously fantastic news. And certainly, I think we need to recognize the importance of knocking down the door and bringing more in behind them because we've often sat back and wondered why Cool Springs and Franklin and Brentwood areas seem to be getting these corporate headquarters, and we've seemed to miss out. And so now that we finally landed one, certainly, it's a tremendous accomplishment, and I think it'll probably be the first of many to come to Murphysboro now because we do have a wonderful city. We'll be a wonderful home for them, and this is great news. So thank you.
And, you know, the corporate headquarter piece, while we've continued to work and knock on doors, the fact of the matter is Murphysboro is a corporate headquarters location. NHC is set across the street. State Farm, while not a corporate headquarters, is a regional headquarter facility that employs many, many people in our community. The first project that came up out of the ground was the Consumer Insurance Corporate Headquarters. So, you know, trying to deal with the perception from some maybe outside Middle Tennessee that, you know, we are a corporate headquarters location, it's projects like this that really help that. And, you know, certainly, we've got Brian Hercules and Paul Latour from the Chamber here, and their representation from the Chamber in Destination Rutherford has been essential in us getting here. You know, this has been a team effort, and we're not listing this on the agenda with the hard work of Paul and Brian in Destination Rutherford.
I'm reminded back when we began the gateway project that there was, this was the dream, that this was going to come to fruition, and reminded of the phrase, persistence yields opportunity. And this certainly is a great opportunity for our community, and I want to commend those that have played a part in bringing this to this point.
It's a team effort.
Move for approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Mr. Lyons, now that this is passed, I would like to make a couple or one quick comment. You mentioned that it's been a team effort, and I think we would be remiss to not recognize Destination Rutherford, Paul Latour, Brian Hercules, and the job that that initiative has done to bring this type of development to Murphysboro, and also the city staff that has worked tirelessly to get this done. And so we thank all of those individuals for the work that you've put into making not just Murphysboro two or three corporate headquarters, but we're continuing to work through to make it a destination place for many different businesses. So, thank you very, very much. We'll move to board and commission appointments. You have a couple of recommendations just for you to look at for the next meeting, and then you have the Senior Citizen Commission appoint Ms. Marie Trot to replace Ms. Betty Childress, and the Board of Gas Examiners to reappoint Eddie Davis and Mr. Steve Simmons.
We're going to have comments next week, that the next meeting or...
Yes. The ones that are just out for you to look at, we'll do those the next meeting, unless I'm, it's just one.
All right, my favorite beer permit.
We need a motion.
That's a motion.
All right, we have a motion.
Some will. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Shacklet's first second. Thank you there, sir. All right, Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move into beer permits.
We have three tonight. None of these have yet finished their building codes inspection, so I'm asking permission to issue these once they have satisfied those inspections. The first one is a convenience store at 904 Northwest Broad Street. It is an ownership change. Beer has been there before. The next one is something that's new to us. It's a microbrew beer store. It, from what I understand, is not really fitting the description of a convenience store. They're going to be selling Growlers and focusing on microbrew beer. Something new. They have met our requirements. This would be a new location for beer. And then finally, we have a convenience store ownership and name change at 407 South Manny Avenue, and there has been beer there before as well. So recommend approval of these if you're comfortable with the new one and for the ones that have had beer before.
Ms. Wright, just so I know what I'm hoping on, what is a Growler?
A Growler is a container that, when you sell draft beer, you put it in a container. It doesn't, it has a top, but it isn't sealed like pop tops and things like from a factory. Mayfield Brewery would be an example of a brewery who sells their beer from draft. You can get that at some of the local restaurants, and I believe this particular business is going to sell some of their draft beer. Kind of like, not a keg, because it's more individual. Yeah, it's smaller, and then you, it's a draft that you can go in and get. Opossum sells them too, currently.
Thank you for your extensive research.
I haven't asked the same question. In fact, I even had a picture of a Growler, because I couldn't even figure it out.
Thank you.
I've not seen one in person, but I've seen a picture.
Allegedly.
I haven't, I haven't attempted it. I have no idea.
Ms. McGannan, I want to make known that the Growler store we're talking about, our company is doing the build-out, so I need to abstain on the beer permit.
And I also need to abstain, one of the owners is a family member of mine.
Then I would suggest we vote on them individually.
Okay. Let's.
I was making sure.
I'll call them individually then, if that's all right, and we'll just go that way. For the first one then, we will start with the microbeer store at 1602 West Northfield Boulevard. Ready? Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Abstain.
Okay. For the next one, the quick second, 904 Northwest Broad Street. Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
And finally, we have the convenience store at 407 South Manny Avenue. Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. We'll move into payment of statements. You have a list of the bills that are ready for payment in front of you.
Mr. Smotherman.
I would move that we pay the bills.
Second.
I think that's great.
We have a motion in a second. I think Mr. Smotherman made the motion for that.
He did. Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Other business from staff?
I get your word crumbling.
We have a recommendation from Mr. Cowell concerning a housing rehabilitation project at 28 Kings Fox Hill Drive, recommending the low bidder, Mr. James Brown, at $22,825. Funds are available in the community development budget. This gets them to about the 50% mark on budget for the year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Ms. Wright, Ms. Gels Harris had the motion, Mr. Washington had the second.
Thank you. Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any other business that come before the City Council? Mr. Smotherman.
Mayor, I just want to remind everybody that this time of year, red means Christmas. And we, we just want to encourage everybody that's out there that might be listening to shop local.
Means stop.
No, it means Christmas with this time of year. And shop local and support your local small businesses, and certainly, if you can't shop with the small ones, shop with the large ones and, and keep that business local. It's good for our economy and it's good for all of us. Thank you.
He's right about that.
With that, this Friday night, December the 5th, 6 o'clock, starting earlier, you have the annual Christmas tree lighting that's going around the square. So I know there will be many businesses that will be opened up for customers. So if you'll come out, and I think Santa is going to make an appearance for the kids. So we'll have Christmas tree lighting. And then the other thing, United Way wanted me to read something, especially as we're starting to get to the end of the year and we're starting to get into tax season. There's a program that has been initiated that is taking place at Patterson Park Community Center, starting January the 30th. It's volunteer income tax assistance. It's a free service that aids qualifying local residents in claiming their tax refunds. The 2015 VITA program is available to any households with an annual income of $58,000. And what this is, it's tax assistance help for preparing your tax returns. Last year, there was $842,893 for return back into the community through the VITA program in 2014. So you can go to www.yerlocalvita.org, or you can contact the United Way. This starts January 30th, Tuesdays and Fridays from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and certain Thursdays from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. Their phone number is 971-8678, if you'd like to schedule an appointment.
And Mayor, I would like to wish Ms. McGannan a belated happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And I think, Melissa, is your birthday coming up?
Uh, it passed.
Oh, well, happy belated.
Thank you.
To you also.
All right. Mr. Lyons, will you give us an update on where, what, I know we're getting into the Christmas season, what we think that our meeting schedule will be?
We'll meet for sure next Thursday. The following Thursday, I believe, is the 18th. There's a question mark next to that one. We are not meeting December 25th or January 1st. So it's possible we'll, we'll meet next week and potentially not till the end of the year. We'll look to see what's pent up and what is time-sensitive to decide on the 18th.
Okay. Just want to let everyone know what's, what's coming up. All right, we'll stand adjourned.